Good evening, I want to welcome you and call to order this meeting of the Floriso ISD Board of Trustees for this date, April 4th, 2022 at 6:30 PM. Let the record show that there is a quorum of board members present. Myself, Dr. Odom, Ms. Martinez, Mr. Savoda, Ms. Berlinga, Ms. Reed, Mr. Shawrock, Mr. Flear. Furthermore, let me record and show that this meeting has been duly posted in accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act. Would you please stand? Ms. Reed, lead us in.
Dear Heavenly Father, be with this meeting. We have some, a group of so many wonderful students. Be with our nation, be with our school itself. We're getting down to having a wonderful graduation. Be with each member of our faculty, office staff, school board, and parents and students as we finish off this year. Dear Heavenly Father, please be with Ukraine and still pray for the COVID people that are having COVID. Lord, be with us and protect us as we go home, in Jesus' name, amen.
Ms. Berlinga, would you lead us in?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Under Texas pride, I pledge allegiance to the Texas one state, under God, one indivisible.
Mr. Flear?
The FISD vision statement is preparing you for a prosperous life, character, knowledge, confidence. Our mission statement is FISD is committed to developing 21st century graduates for lifelong learners that are prosperful, uh, sorry, excuse me, purposeful, innovative, collaborative, and possess character traits and lead to success.
Ms. Martinez will recite the FISD goals.
The FISD goals are each student will maximize their potential. Each student will be a lifelong learner, prepared for their future. Each student will be a contributing member of the global society. FISD will strive to build strong relationships with stakeholders. FISD will exercise fiscal responsibility.
Now, we will recite our FISD core values. Our FISD core beliefs are, we believe that each individual is unique.
We believe character values are the building blocks of a prosperous life. We believe in a strong work ethic.
We believe in mutual respect is the foundation for a safe and nurturing environment.
We believe that helping one another strengthens our, the community.
We believe education is a shared responsibility throughout the community.
We believe effective communication is vital to success.
We believe that lifelong learning cultivates personal growth.
We believe that everyone deserves access to a quality education.
We believe that in failure, there is opportunity for growth.
Mr. Shawrock now will give an overview of good governance and code of ethics.
Each month, we highlight one of our good governance indicators and code of ethics that the FISD Board of Trustees will follow to promote the best interests of the district as a whole. This month, the code of ethics we are highlighting, honor and conduct. I will tell the truth. I will share my views while working for a consensus. I respect the majority decisions as the decision for the board. I will base my decisions on fact rather than supposition, opinion, or public favor. Our good governance indicator for the month is the board has a written plan for the review and measurement of board advocacy for the district within the community and with other good, other governmental entities.
Now, we will recognize our March Students of the Month. Mrs. Gonzalez, would you like to come up and share that with us?
Good evening, everyone. Dr. Gilstrap, Super Junior Schools, Dr. Odom, our School Board President and our School Board Trustees. I am honored again to introduce to you all our April Students of the Month. First, we have Amber Leanna Cortina. Amber Leanna is the 18-year-old daughter of Lori Light and Eric Cortina. She's in the top half of her class with an overall GPA of 3.8. Amber Leanna is very active on campus, serving as a member of the National Honor Society and in Skills USA. In March, Amber Leanna represented the high schools in the Skills USA Health Science Technology Competition and received the Gold Basic Healthcare Award and qualified for state competition. The state competition was held this past weekend, and as of right now, I have not been told there are results yet. Amber Leanna is also a member of the varsity soccer team where she serves as the captain and was named Academic All District for Soccer in 2020, '21, and in '22. Outside of school, Amber Leanna has volunteered her time with the 2020 Alamo City Election. Even with her busy schedule and her part-time job at Cortina Precisions as a shipping associate, Amber Leanna has taken numerous honors courses and will graduate with honors. Amber Lina, Amber Leanna plans to either attend UTSA or Texas A&amp;M Corpus Christi where she intends to major in nursing and specifically train as a labor and delivery nurse. So ladies and gentlemen, Amber Leanna Cortina. Our next April Student of the Month is Brandon Cardenas. He is the 17-year-old son of Laura and Dawn Cardenas. He is in the top habits class with an overall GPA of 4.0. Brandon is very active on the campus, serving as a member of the National Honor Society and lead crew and has participated in academic, in UIL academics this year in the category of medical terminology. Brandon is also a member of the varsity baseball team where he has received the All Academic District Award for the last three years. Brandon represents the Florisville community, serving as prince of the royal court for the Florisville Peanut Festival Association. Brandon has volunteered his time with the food bank, blood drive, hanging peanuts for the peanut festival, participate in the Community Annual Peanut 5K Run, and the Children Alliance of South Texas. With his busy school schedule and his part-time job as an umpire for the Little League, bless me. Brandon has earned 18 college credits through Coastal Bend and will graduate with honors. Brandon plans to attend Shriners University where he intends to major in sports management. So ladies and gentlemen, Brandon Cardenas.
On behalf of the board, Amber Lina, Brandon, congratulations. You know, it's, it's a long road to get here, but we can't say how proud we are as a school having y'all and your parents. All those times they were on you by studying hard and getting after it, it's paid off. Y'all are the top of the class, that's awesome. Makes us proud to have students like y'all. I tell my kids, I want y'all to be like these students up here on top of the list here. So, again, congratulations and keep it up. We invite y'all back, good luck in your endeavors. Y'all go to college, whatever y'all want to do, come back to our community, come help in the school, come work for us. You're doing good on it. And Little League, I'm proud of that because I know you get a lot of stuff over there. But again, keep it up, you put in your work, appreciate it.
Thank you. You guys are doing very good in this. One, two, three. Mrs. Chu, will you go that way? Perfect, perfect, okay, yeah. One, two, three. Thank you.
Congratulations, good job.
Now, we have some recognitions for powerlifting. Coach Roars, would you please come forward?
Good evening, members of the school board and Dr. Gilstrap. In our athletic department, we have five pillars, their character, coaching, community, commitment, and competition. Tonight, our focus will be on the competition pillar. It's my privilege to introduce the student athletes and coaching staff of our Jaguar and Tiger Piloting Program of competing at the highest level, one of them back-to-back years. Please allow me to introduce Coach Wendy Salazar and Coach Vince Gonzalez to talk about their amazing student athletes and their accomplishments. Wendy?
Good evening. First, thank you for having us. These three young ladies, my state qualifiers, they have done exceedingly well all season, meddling at different invitational meets and competed at the highest level. Chrissy Chester, our little one right there. She's a first-year powerlifting letterman. She's a first-time regional qualifier and state qualifier. Christie placed fourth at the state meet. She is a senior and graduating. She will be continuing her education at the collegiate level. Allison Machado, this one. Allison is a three-year powerlifting letterman. She's a first-time regional qualifier and a first-time state qualifier. Allison has done well at every invitational meet we had this season, meddling at every meet. She placed sixth at the state level competition. Allison is also ranked 24th in her senior class with a GPA of 101.4. As for academics, she was also recognized for her academics at the state level. She received All-State, All-Eleven Academic Team. She is pursuing a degree at Texas A&amp;M San Antonio in criminal justice and criminology on a full academic scholarship. Destiny Leandro, she is a two-year letterman for me. She is a two-time regional qualifier and a two-time state qualifier. She placed fourth at the regional meet and she brought home a bronze medal, surpassing her goal from last year. Last year, she placed fourth, this year she placed third. Destiny is also ranked 14th in her senior class with a GPA of 101.3. She has verbally committed to continue her lifting career at Willand Jewel in Missouri where she'll be pursuing a nursing degree as well. She also received academic honors on the All-State, All-Academic Elite Team. So, those two things by themselves are a hard accomplishment. I'm very proud of these seniors. They're going to be sorely missed. I'm very proud of them. I don't want to get emotional, but these girls have done very well all season for themselves, for our team, and they are great examples of Florisville and FISD. And I'm looking forward to seeing what they do in the future with their careers.
Good evening, members of the school board. I've got the youngster Gavin LaFlore. This young man is 16 years old, he's only a junior, and he's accomplished so much. This one's so special for me because I've had the pleasure of coaching him for the last three years since he's a freshman. He's busted down ceilings all the way through. The young man, he made it to regionals last year as a sophomore. And he wanted to go to state bad, and he didn't quite make it last year. And he looked at me and said, "Never again, coach." And I believed him. And he's worked extremely hard to get where he has, where he is this year. He's had tremendous year in the local meets, he's always made first or second place all the way through. He made third at regionals this year. And then he qualified for state with a total of 1,300 pounds. So, he made, he made the number. When we went there, he was projected 20 out of 24 lifters in his weight class, in the 165 weight class. We ended up bringing a lot of hearts and Gavin ended up seventh when we got there. And he ended up with 1,340 pounds, so he actually set a personal record while he was there. I fully expect him to do, to blow those numbers out next year. That's just the kind of young man he is. But he's determined, he's going to make things happen. He also has a 3.8 GPA right now, let you know, so he's highly academically, you know, great for us here. At the same time, he already has an offer as a young junior to Friends University. And I fully expect to see about three more coming his way by the time we're done. Thank you.
I want to talk to you all that powerlifting and lifting weights, you know, I'm lucky to do two-pound lifting. And I have, but I have family members that are all sports, and weightlifting is hard. It's trading your mind and getting your muscles. And proud of you, you've got, the girls have got some accomplishments, can't be taken away. And you, I know you will do very good next year. But it takes dedication. It's not just here at school. I imagine all of you have weights at home. And it, it's going to, dedication and you can use the knowledge to go on in, in your life. Then come back and encourage some of our, the ones that are still here. Very, very proud of you all.
Thank you. On either side, I think yes. Ms. Jono Warner, why don't we move to the other side of Mr. Gilstrap? And then, yes, that's correct. And one, two. Sorry. One, two, three. One, two, three. Okay.
Good. Thank you very much, and congratulations to Rana. Next, we have some Skills USA recognitions. Leanne Marshall, would you please come forward and share?
Okay, so, good evening, school board. Dr. Gilstrap, here at community members. For those of you unfamiliar with Skills USA, it's a nationally recognized education association that serves middle school, high school, and college students who are preparing for careers in trade, technical, and skilled service occupations. Their goal is to ensure that America has a skilled workforce and does this by offering many opportunities for growth through career competitions. So, students can compete at the local level and qualify for state as well as national competitions based upon their performance. And FHS actually had the honor of hosting our first-ever district Skills USA competition, and it was for welding in February. It was a huge undertaking, but it was really successful and we had a lot of schools participate. So, tonight, I have the pleasure of introducing a few of our CTE teachers who will, who have been working with the students who went on to compete in Skills USA. And they will tell you a little bit about the competition, what all they competed in, and how well they performed. So, first, I would like to introduce Ms. Amber Hilber and Mrs. Tracy Scott, who work with our health science students, who will tell you a little bit about that competition.
Hello, I am Amber Hilber, and I am one of the health science teachers at Florisville High School. This is my second year with Florisville High School, and I would like to introduce two of the students that qualified for state this year. One of them was unable to join us, she's having some family issues. This is Amber Leanna. She competed in basic healthcare, which includes taking blood pressure, vitals, pulse, respirations. And Heather Hubbs, who competed in medical terminology.
So, this past week, they were able to compete at the state level in Corpus Christi. They went through a grueling test phase over two and a half days, pretty much Thursday through Saturday. And we're still waiting for the results, but they went against schools all across Texas. So, we're very proud of them, very proud. Thank you.
Now, we wait till the end, but go ahead, if you'd like to say something.
I recognize Heather from volunteering at the shelter, but I, on behalf of the board, I wanted to say, keep doing what you're doing. It is not something that is easy to do. Aside from what your responsibilities with school are, you're doing the other extra things, whether it's volunteering in the community, studying for, to prepare for these competitions. Keep, keep going in the direction you're going. This is going to be super key in your, later in your life. You'll see where this fits in and how, how easy things are later in life. I am, I have lost my, okay. So, congratulations and thank you for representing a Floriso school district in such a great light.
Up and down, picture.
Ms. Kathy. Can you guys just go that way just a touch? Good, 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 good. We're good. One, two, three. One, two, everybody smiling.
Feel, feel free to get up and take a picture if you want.
Thank you.
I'll shake their hands, thank you all very much, congratulations.
So, our next group is actually our group of welding students who competed. And our sponsors for that group are, we have Mr. Daniel Palma and Coach Isaac Barera.
Well, where this is, Armando Kenneth Lerma, he placed in the welding one competition. District level, he took first place. Unfortunately, at the state level, he didn't place one through third, but he still did pretty good knowing that he didn't have no blueprints or nothing like that, and he had to do overhead welds in two different types of positions. He still figured it out pretty well, in my opinion. Kenneth, for you?
All right. Anything else, Coach?
That is it?
We just want to say that as a board, we're very proud of you and the sacrifices that you make in and out of the classroom to make this happen. This right here is application of the learning, and it's so important and so vital to your career as you move forward, whatever path you may choose. Whether it's in welding, obviously you've got that skill set, or the skills that you learn there, you can apply anywhere else. So, congratulations to you, thank you for representing us at the state level. All right? You got to take a picture now. Thank you, sir, appreciate it. Get your hand up.
Mr. Swartrock. Should go step that way a little bit, and then we'll lose. How come, how we get weird? Right there, there we go. Why doesn't Isaac go with that? Yeah, that would probably help. There we go, sorry. Well, no, that was worse. Go back, go back, that was worse. Ready, here we go, and... One, two, three. One, two, three.
All right. Appreciate it.
Job well done, sir.
Thank you, Mark. I love you. Talk to me. Yes, sir.
Yeah, that's tough.
Got some work for you.
Everyone here, we have our Skills USA job exhibit team. This group of boys here consists of Woden Acevedo, Ashan Mayberry, Andrew Carrero, Ezekiel Ramos, and Gavin LaFlore. These boys here built a very nice deer blind, they got a perfect score of 200 on their binder. When they took it to state, they needed a score of 400, they reached 330. They were pretty close, they were almost there, they got an excellent ribbon. They did well, I'm proud of them. These group of boys came during their Thanksgiving break, Christmas break. I tried to convince them for spring break, but they said no. But they worked on that project for a good five, six months, and I was there at the shop looking for a home. And so, but these boys did really, really good. The best part is, five, five of them are juniors, so I got one more year with them and hopefully we can do something better next year. But it's a great group of kids here.
I'll say, uh... I would say if y'all are looking for a project, let me know, I may come up with something. Again, the application of what you're learning. You're taking it outside the classroom, and while a deer blind is one thing, that there's no certain niche of people can use that, those skills, or that particular product, the skills you're learning are going to be applicable anywhere you go, in or outside, any field that you may choose to go into. So, kudos to you, thank you for representing Floriso ISD at the state level, at the highest level of competition. Y'all reached that level and represented us with pride and class, and we just want to say thank you very much, guys. All right? All right, you can all up there, take a picture.
Again, again.
Up and down.
Okay, let's see the... Yes, sir. Just a little bit, get yourself a little bit of room there. Oh, this one worked out nicely. One, two, three. One, two, everybody smiling.
All right. Y'all look good, y'all. You're good, you're good, buddy.
That's okay, I don't need it. You can build me another one. Good job.
So, our next group for Skills USA is our promotional bulletin board. Right now, we have Jerry Goodell and Kim Kinhardt, we are just missing Jasmine Barara, who couldn't make it. But these girls here did promotional bulletin board. I believe they took second place at district. And then, at state level, they gave the outcome we want, or we really don't know yet until results are posted. So, we are waiting on that for them as well. But their promotional bulletin board was pretty much about welding safety in the shop. They made a nice little cutout of the state of Texas, they put all the districts that we have in Skills USA, and they just did, they did a really good job, even though sometimes it gave me headaches and did really good. They did really, really good, and I am proud of them.
Well, ladies, I just want to say thank you very much for everything that you do to dedicate your time to make yourselves better, but you're also representing us, representing our CTE department, representing our staff and our community and the way that you do it. We take pride in that. And so, thank you very much for doing everything that you do to make everybody here successful and then preparing you for the skills later on in life that you'll be able to apply to any job that you may do. So, thank you very much for your dedication.
Oh, smile.
All right, so this part of Skills USA here is occupational health and safety. The group, it was a group of three. It was Jolene Headel, she can't be here, Lena Merced, and then Jasmine Given couldn't make it, so we can't see how to fill in for the position over the state trip. And district, I believe they took second. And then they made it to state, I'm waiting for results on that one as well. So, as soon as I know something, the school will know. But I'm proud of McKenty, I didn't see if she was in another group, now she's in here, she stepped up last second to help out. Lena did really good, and so did Jolene for only being freshman. So, it's looking good for Skills USA here in the future. But theirs was also based upon shop safety, health, pretty much in the shop. They did a really good job at asking me a million questions, the most difference between the shop and industry. So, I am...
You all have great patience with these girls. I've known these girls for a long time. I pray for y'all. I was like, I miss you. I owe these girls and give more power to you, but I hope they have one more year with you.
Good job.
You did a great job. Thank you. Thank you.
Next, we have a community of character award to be given out. It's headed by Brooks.
Good evening, members of the board...
Can you hang on a second?
Yes. Good evening, members of the board of Mr. Gilstrap. I am pleased to introduce you to Jonathan Garcia, the next Community of Character Award recipient. Jonathan, a third grade student at Florisville North Elementary, hopes to be a doctor when he grows up. And last month, his passion turned into practice when he came to the aid of a fellow student. During lunch in the cafeteria, a classmate mouthed to Jonathan that he could not breathe as a waffle had gotten stuck in his throat. Jonathan quickly sprang into action and attempted the Heimlich maneuver. Luckily, Jonathan was prepared for this. Recently, his mother partnered with our campus nurse to walk Jonathan through a doctor kit of medical supplies. During their visit, she spoke with him about several lifesaving methods and tools. We're grateful for the skills he learned and Jonathan's innate desire to help people. Thanks to Jonathan, his classmate was breathing easily in just a few seconds. So at this time, I'd like to present the future doctor Jonathan Garcia as a Community of Character recipient.
Jonathan, there are so many adults who wouldn't know what action to take when being next to somebody who is choking. It's so impressive that someone at your age has that quick thinking to be able to act and help somebody in that way. Our goal here is to produce lifelong learners and to show that character does lead to success and you're already demonstrating that character. We look forward to seeing the great things that you're going to continue to do here in the district. We're very proud of you.
Good job.
All right, Jonathan, you take a picture up here.
All right. Okay. One, two, three. One, two, everybody smiling.
All right.
Y'all look good, Joe. I might have something on.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. There you go.
That's okay, I don't need it. You can build me another one. Good job.
So our next group for Skills USA is our promotional bulletin board. Right now, we have Jerry Goodell and Kim Inhardt. We are just missing Jasmine Barera who couldn't make it. But these girls here did promotional bulletin board. I believe they took second place at district. And then at state, there was 14 teams that competed with it. They made top six out of those 14 and haven't heard results from that as well. So they did pretty good. The first four around in state was a little rough, but they made top six and then that round was a lot better. I kind of had high hopes for them on this one here. And like I said, they've been doing it since their eighth grade year. They work hard, they really do. And same thing, most of them are juniors. So I still have another year with them and they can hopefully make it back to state or maybe next year nationals. It's a high goal, but this group can do it if they really want to.
Well, ladies, y'all competed since the eighth grade. So this has been a lot of dedication, many hours, both in and outside of the classroom to prepare for the detailed piece of this contest. And so, thank you very much for representing us and this community. We're very proud of you. So kudos to you and thank you for everything. And I know this is our last group, but to our CTE program, to our staff, the hours that y'all put in, obviously this is very successful. We're competing at the highest levels in the state and this is not an easy feat. And so, thank you all very much for your dedication to our students and preparing them beyond high school and giving them those skill sets that they need to be successful in any path that they may choose. So ladies, thank you for representing us. To our staff, thank you for all the hours that you put in with them to make them successful.
No, I'm sorry, you can go in that one. Yeah, no, that's fine. Yeah, that's good. Perfect. You're good, you're good, you're good. Ready, one, two. One, two, three. One, two, three.
And I'm going to say I'm Gabby's mom. You all have great patience with these girls. I've known these girls for a long time. I pray for y'all. I was like, I miss you. I owe these girls and give more power to you, but I hope they have one more year with you.
Good job.
You did a great job. Thank you. Thank you.
Next, we have a Community of Character Award to be given out. It's headed by Brooks.
Good evening, members of the board...
Can you hang on a second?
Yes. Good evening, members of the board of Mr. Gilstrap. I am pleased to introduce you to Jonathan Garcia, the next Community of Character Award recipient. Jonathan, a third grade student at Florisville North Elementary, hopes to be a doctor when he grows up. And last month, his passion turned into practice when he came to the aid of a fellow student. During lunch in the cafeteria, a classmate mouthed to Jonathan that he could not breathe as a waffle had gotten stuck in his throat. Jonathan quickly sprang into action and attempted the Heimlich maneuver. Luckily, Jonathan was prepared for this. Recently, his mother partnered with our campus nurse to walk Jonathan through a doctor kit of medical supplies. During their visit, she spoke with him about several lifesaving methods and tools. We're grateful for the skills he learned and Jonathan's innate desire to help people. Thanks to Jonathan, his classmate was breathing easily in just a few seconds. So at this time, I'd like to present the future doctor Jonathan Garcia as a Community of Character recipient.
Jonathan, there are so many adults who wouldn't know what action to take when being next to somebody who is choking. It's so impressive that someone at your age has that quick thinking to be able to act and help somebody in that way. Our goal here is to produce lifelong learners and to show that character does lead to success and you're already demonstrating that character. We look forward to seeing the great things that you're going to continue to do here in the district. We're very proud of you.
Good job.
All right, Jonathan, you take a picture up here.
All right. One, two, three. One, two, three.
All right. Thank you, sir. Congratulations, sir.
Great job, Jonathan. You want me to take care of us at our bedside? Yeah.
All right, next, we will have a high school diploma presentation. Mr. Schröder, would you please come forward?
Mr. Fernando Martinez, would you come forward as well, please, sir? Good evening, Superintendent Dr. Gilstrap, Board of Trustees. Tonight, I have Mr. Fernando Martinez. He was supposed to receive a diploma from Florisville High School in 1968. Months before he would have graduated, a different document found its way into Mr. Martinez's hands, draft paper. Mr. Martinez traded both cap and gown for a United States military uniform serving in the Army, missing graduation when he arrived for basic training in Fort Polk, Louisiana. As a young soldier, his assignment was to the 758th Supply and Service Company and the 82nd Airborne Division. Sergeant First Class Fernando Martinez retired from the Army with an honorable discharge. Later, he re-enlisted and served in Germany, France, Spain, Japan, Korea, Panama, and Australia. Fernando Martinez received many awards during his military career. He received the National Defense Service Medal, Armed Forces Expedientary Medal, Army Service Ribbon, Overseas Service Ribbon, Republic of Vietnam Gallantry Cross Unit Citation Badge with Palm, Republic of Vietnam Campaign Medal, Vietnam Service Medal with four stars, Army Achievement Medal, and the Army Commendation Medal. At this time, I call Marcia Gonzalez. I'm sorry.
Dr. Oden. Dr. Oden, if you want to come up here.
Sure.
For those that do not know, the Texas Education Code in House Bill 4733, Operation Recognition, is a program that honors veterans of World War II, Korea, and Vietnam by granting them high school diplomas. It is a belated gesture of our lasting respect and appreciation for their service and commitment to our nation. On behalf of Florisville Independent School District and as Principal of Florisville High School, it is my pleasure to inform you all that Mr. Fernando Martinez has met the requirements for graduation from Florisville High School. Mr. Martinez will be hereby recognized as a member of the graduating class of Florisville, the class of 1968.
And I'd like to say... Bus driving. Good for us. For several, several years.
Ms. Martinez, as Board President, I congratulate you on your diploma. As we honor you tonight, it is such a wonderful honor for us to do so as a board. We're grateful for you and grateful for all that you've served in our country as well as here in Florisville. And we're grateful for you and we love you, we appreciate you. Congratulations on your diploma.
Don't want to turn around and say one more time? Sure. He wants you right here. Just one more time. There you go.
One, two, three. And then I'm going to take a big one off. One, two, three. I'm going to get several. We want to make sure you have enough pictures. Okay, let's get this whole board. Dr. Oden, you scooch that way. Just look, both of you scoot that way, just a touch. Good. One, two, three. One, two, three.
Thank you, Schröder.
Congratulations. Well, you've accomplished everything you've done, boys. We just remember. All right, looks like all of you are leaving. Just in time.
Just...
Just in time.
You're going to miss the best part.
Ms. Petrie, do we have any public comments?
No, we do not.
All right. Next on the agenda are reports and updates. Dr. Gilstrap will start us off, or the Superintendent.
Good evening, Board members. Just a few things we want to go over this evening, kind of give you an update on. First of all, we are moving forward with our Strategic Plan 2.0. And that process, it will happen later this month. We'll get that kicked off. It's an exciting time for FISD and our community as we start to review our district mission, vision, and goals. And we look forward to the next five to 10 years and even beyond that. We'll have a board workshop that'll start that process off on Monday, April 25th at 6:00. There will be a follow-up community meeting on Tuesday, April 26th. That'll provide our community an opportunity to provide some additional input as well. Our goal is to have at least 48 parents, staff, community members there and participating. And we are asking for an RSVP. So if you know of anybody that is interested in participating in that process, please feel free to direct them to us or to our district website where they can RSVP for that event. There will be follow-up meetings for each group that will come up in June as to kind of start to conclude that process of just getting it kicked off. So really, it's a great opportunity. We're really looking forward to it as we've got some things that we need to make sure we're addressing as we look forward to the future. As we continue to plan for the 22-23 school year, we are reviewing the student-teacher ratios as well as classroom facilities. So arrangements have been made in this forthcoming budget to accommodate five new additional teachers, teaching positions at elementary campuses due to continuing growth and class size concerns. We're also making arrangements for a second portable building at South Elementary. And so, those arrangements are being made in the budget as well. This is an immediate need that must be addressed for a short-term measure, once again, short-term only, as we start to look to the future. And so, our campus principals are in the process of making sure we are developing those plans so that we can still continue to meet the needs of our students in classrooms. Over the past two weeks, I've had the opportunity to see our students in action. As you can see from the 30-plus students that we've recognized this evening, it's a great time in Florisville ISD and for the high school. But I've been able to go out and watch some of our kids in action and I must say, I must say that our kids are representing us with class, with pride, and with respect, not only our district but our community. Our ONE Act play has advanced. They made it to area. They didn't advance past that, but getting to area. Our girls' golf team finished first as a team. They also had the first, second, and third place finishers. Our boys' golf team advancing to regionals as well. We've got track and field that's forthcoming. Baseball, softball are both in the hunt for the playoffs. And also, just the other night, I went to the ROTC Kitty Hawk Induction, which is their academic awards that they have, the society that they have in ROTC. So a lot of great opportunities for showcasing the great things our kids are doing. So I encourage you to be a part of it. I've included in the board packet a list of events for April and May. They're so numerous, I had to make a list so that I could start. My calendar got too full. I couldn't keep track of all of them. So I made a list for myself, so I shared that with you. And also, it should be in color, so the ones that are highlighted in blue were ones that I really thought about. This would be something that you may be interested in attending. So please let myself or Alyssa to know about if you're going to be able to participate in those. One quick change, the upcoming, I believe on our calendar, it's April the 13th, is our Dream Maker Teacher Notification. It's a little reception that we have in the library. We're looking at having to change that date, so just a heads up. Not finalized it yet, but we're having to make some adjustments with personnel. All right. The ultimate, the ultimate event in any school district is graduation. Graduation will be held Friday, May 27th, at Eshenberg Stadium. Board members will meet in the Tigers Den in the Fieldhouse at 7:00 to prepare, so please be there by 7:00. We will have parking passes so that you can park in that parking lot. We will have caps and gowns, regalia, all will be there. We will escort the class of 2022 onto the stadium at 7:15, so please make sure we're there so that we can get started on time. Last year, we actually bumped that up a little bit due to some inclement weather, so if you can get there a few minutes early, it'd be a good thing, just in case we have some weather issues. Also, the board members will be presenting each graduate with a diploma, so each one of you will have an opportunity. And if you, if there's a particular senior, if there's something like that that we need to make arrangements for, please let us know in advance and we can make sure that those things happen. One thing I did not include, but it did pop on my calendar, we want to recognize our assistant principals. This week is Assistant Principals Week, so we want to thank them for their dedication, their time to our students and our staff, for everything that they do to support our, their education and their learning. Being an assistant principal, there's no other job like it. It's a tough job and you will not work closer with students and with families than you do as an assistant principal across the campus. You get the opportunity to really be with them. Finally, included in the board packet is the recommendations for contract personnel. As was approved in Policy Update DC Local, from April 1st to August 31st, the board has granted the superintendent authority to offer these and so there will not be any board action, but it is provided to you as a report this evening. If there are any other questions?
Dr. Wade will now give an update on the District Improvement Plan Formative Review.
Good evening, Dr. Oden, Dr. Gilstrap, and Board members. Tonight, I will provide you a very brief update on the status of the strategies in our District Improvement Plan.
I saw that wink.
I timed myself for five minutes.
to offer these, and so there will not be any board action, but it is provided to you as a report this evening. If there are any other questions.
Dr. Wade will now give an update on the District Improvement Plan Formative Review.
Good evening, Dr. Odom, Dr. Gilstrap, and board members. Tonight, I will provide you a very brief update on the status of the strategies in our District Improvement Plan.
Sorry, I saw that wink.
No, there was no wink. I timed myself for five minutes. So tonight, I will share the formative review that was conducted by the district leadership team in March, where we reviewed the progress on all five goals. I'm just providing you a brief summary, but you've got the 25-page document in your packet if you'd like to look at some of the details. Goal one is that each student will maximize their potential. And for this goal, there are four objectives and 21 strategies. So far, we've accomplished four of those strategies and made considerable progress on 16 others. Some highlights for this goal is in the area of social-emotional intelligence. Our capturing kids' hearts had campus visits from the flipping group in January to check on their progress. And we've actually scheduled our beginning-of-year training for our new teachers. The counselors have been supporting transition for our fifth-grade students going to sixth grade and the eighth-grade students going to ninth grade. And the high school counselors have met with every student to review their four-year plans and make sure they're ready for graduation. And that's quite an accomplishment with over 1,000 students at the high school. In the area of achievement, we've completed our middle-of-year screening on reading and math. We do that three times a year to see how students are progressing. And the high school has modified their intervention time to be more effective. We began summer school planning, and students are going to have an opportunity to have enriched activities instead of just reading and math this year. And we have completed the GT, Gifted Intelligent, screening of all kindergarten students, which is our screening to make sure we don't miss any students that might be classified as GT. Goal two is that each student will be a lifelong learner, prepared for their future. This goal has five objectives and 16 strategies, of which we've had considerable progress on 14. In the innovative learning environment categories, we've had writing-across-the-curriculum training and coaching by the author of Writing Across the Curriculum, Dr. John Collins, who came down from Boston. Blended learning walks, our district and campus leadership teams have been visiting classrooms and providing some feedback. And in fact, some of the teachers at FSE asked to visit middle school. So they visited middle school to see implementation because of the effectiveness of their implementation there. We had a dual-language committee meeting that concluded, looking at our program for next year, which the board was communicating with, and we are increasing our stipends next year out of our Title III and our bilingual allotment bodies. We have contracted with a company called EdU to provide some digital online training for our teachers of their choice, which will launch later this month. And Technology Department received emergency connectivity funds, which would 100% fund student devices for us for next school year. Goal three is that each student will be a contributing member of the Global Society. There are three objectives and six strategies for this goal, and we've had some progress on five of them, specifically in the area of service learning projects at the campuses, such as the 50 Acts of Service at elementary. Goal four is that FISD will strive to build strong relationship with stakeholders. This goal has three objectives and eight strategies, and we've had considerable progress on six of them. Some highlights in the area of maintaining employee retention is we are working for the proposed raises and benefits and have a proposal for that. Our teacher pension group is meeting with teachers voluntarily about retirement, and we have implemented two trade days for next school year. We've had lots of input opportunities for our stakeholders. We've had a grading guidelines committee that the board received the final draft of that document that will go into effect next year. And there were teachers from every campus providing input on that. We've had an instructional materials committee meeting that had also teachers from every K-8 campus. And focus groups for strategic planning included teachers as well as students and parents. And then our instructional design team included, I'm thinking, five to six, but about 30 different stakeholders for students, teachers, and Dr. Odom and Ms. Martinez came for a couple of those events. Goal five is that FISD will exercise fiscal responsibility. This goal has two objectives and seven strategies. We've accomplished two of those. Highlights are the dyslexia training grant. We have the opportunity to offer more money, as Dr. Gilstrap says, to do training for our dyslexia staff. And then the grant that I just mentioned for technology devices. That concludes the second formative review for the board. In June, I will provide you with the last formative review, and then the summative review will be presented in August. I'll be glad to answer any questions that you might have. It was time.
See, the numbers are good, better.
Yes. The numbers are getting better, and we'll get there. You know, sometimes we may just continue or continue through the next year if we don't beat the, actually accomplish it and make progress.
Takes a while, looks good.
Dr. Wade, I'll now give an update on ESAR funds.
Yes, your favorite subject.
My favorite subject, yes.
So I'm going to share an update on our ESAR funds and our expenditures today and what we plan for the future. So Florisville ISD was allocated about $5.2 million for ESAR III. That's the elementary and secondary school emergency relief. And about $2.3 for ESAR II. In addition, we received a T-Class grant, that is Texas COVID Learning Acceleration Supports from TEA, for $300,000. Since that, I'm including the T-Class because some of the funds we originally planned for ESAR have flowed through to T-Class now, so we're not having to use those ESAR funds for that, so I wanted to mention that. That grant is specifically about learning loss, and it offsets those expenses. ESAR III has a three-year term, with expenditures have to be incurred by the end of September 2024. And ESAR II and T-Class have a two-year term, ending 2023. So that's the three funds I'm going to talk about. Just to remind the board, when we first went through this process of submitting the ESAR application, there's allowable uses of this fund. We just cannot use it for whatever we want. There are, funds can be used for activities for long-term closures, technology, tracking student attendance, school repairs, improvement in air quality, including HVAC, health protocols. And then I want to draw your attention to this last one. Other items to make up continuity of services for the local education agency, including continuing to employ existing staff. So it seems like we can use it for everything, but there are some stipulations. And in fact, ESAR III has even more stipulation. 20% of those funds must be set aside to meet these two criteria. And I just put them in two columns just to help you understand. On the left is support for special populations, such as students with disabilities, English learners, to include supplemental learning and mental health supports. And the second column is things like summer learning and addressing learning loss through evidence-based activities or supports for parents and families. So for ESAR III specifically, there's a 20% set aside that we must meet. So prior to the grant application, we conducted a survey of all of our stakeholders to get their input on the specific categories for ESAR spending. And here is the summaries for the items identified as both important and very important. So you'll see the categories of district campus administration, staff, parents, and the parentheses are the number of survey responses we got. So we've got 590 parent responses. So what I did is I averaged them for you here in that column for those categories. The items highlighted in blue was their top priority. The orange and purple are the second and third priority. So the average for all of them, the top category was student academic support. And then the second one was teacher supports, and then maintenance and facility health. I do want to point out, as we began to identify expenses to support all of these categories, when we begin looking at student supports, really what happened is our teacher supports is what's helping our students. When we provide the resources and support for teachers, they're helping students. So that's the rankings. And so now I'm going to share the detail for each of those. Here is the projected expenditures for this school year, 21, 22, by each of those categories. So you see the ESAR III, ESAR II, T-Class, and then the totals. I'm going to detail these in just a minute, but just to give you an idea, we're projected to spend about $2 million from ESAR III this school year, $1.4 million from ESAR II, and about $150,000 from T-Class, for a grand total of about $3.6 million this school year. So here is the breakdown of the funds for each of those, the categories for each of those funds. And I want to point out just a little bit, so anything that's green and blue is ESAR III, blue is expensed, green is anticipated. So blue and green together make ESAR III. ESAR II is orange, that's anticipated, and red, we've already expensed. And then T-Class is yellow. So I'm trying to break down what we've already expensed and then what we anticipate. So here's the detail. So for student academic support, from ESAR III funds, we have hired a bilingual interventionist that's supporting our emergent bilinguals at both of the campuses. We have funded school tutoring. We anticipated that we would be funding teacher extra duty pay for after-school, but the campus principals have been very creative, strategic, in creating master schedules that allows for that tutoring to occur during the school day. So we've had a little bit of after-school funds expensed, but mostly it's being recorded during the school day. Elementary campuses are utilizing their small group instruction time, and secondary campuses have designed a class period at least two days a week to support tutoring our students. We are also planning an expanded summer program, as I mentioned earlier, about the students having opportunities not only to accelerate their learning and math and reading, but also with other activities like culinary arts or floor music. From T-Class, we have purchased an online tutoring program called FAV Tutor, which is primarily supporting our middle school and high school students. We do have a few elementary students taking advantage of that for those parents who did not weigh the 1 to 3 ratio, which is required for House Bill 4545 for tutoring. And we've been also able to purchase those tutor materials that are used by the students and teachers during that tutoring time. Here's the expenses for technology. In ESAR III, we have upgraded our Wi-Fi and replaced or repaired some damaged student devices, so we always have enough devices on hand. And from ESAR II, we purchased a master scheduling program for secondary campuses and plan to purchase teacher projectors, as well as some additional hotspots. For social-emotional supports, we've hired a behavior specialist at both elementary campuses. I will tell you, we got one at South First, and then it's been several months. When did you get yours, Ms. Spoh? January. So even though I say we haven't had them all year. And then the previous VOGA counselors have transitioned to social service specialists, and so they are currently being funded from ESAR as well. But I do have to say, we've been notified that we could have another VOGA grant coming through. We actually been approved or waited, I don't know, Ms. Spoh. So if that...
We were denied.
Yeah, we were denied, and then they turned around and said, oh, you can have your money now. But we're still going through the negotiation and haven't received a notice of grant award. So when that happens, my social services staff will be funded out of VOGA through the end of September. I can retroactively go back, which will free up some more money from ESAR. It's a great challenge to have all this money that we can only spend in certain areas. For instructional resources, we are planning to purchase math and science materials. As I mentioned before about the input committees, we've had committees looking at those math and science materials. The state did not authorize a new adoption for math and science in K.A., which they typically do, and our materials expire at the end of this school year. However, we have a fund called the Technology Instructional Material Allotment Fund that we typically purchase those items. The state cut that by less or more than half this school year, so we're needing to replace those materials with additional funds. So that's why we're purchasing it from ESAR. We are also purchasing some tool materials from ESAR. So overall, we plan to spend about $235,000 on student academic supports, $273,000 on technology, $176,000 on social-emotional learning, and $220,000, about $5,000, on instructional resources. However, there are two more categories, and these are the categories that have the largest expense items, with almost $880,000 for teacher supports and over $1.7 million for maintenance and facility health. And it's not that we're buying lots of things, it's there's two items for that one point, or actually, three items for that 1.7. So here's the detail. For teacher supports, in ESAR III, we purchased coaching for professional learning communities for each campus, and we hired a program facilitator for each campus. Those program facilitators are providing support for our 504 meetings, our ARGs for special education meetings, LPACs for emergent bilingual, and our response to intervention meetings. We also provided a retention stipend at the beginning of the year for all staff. In ESAR III, we provided a retention stipend at Thanksgiving, and we plan to provide a reading academy stipend for those who are completing that coursework by the end of June. For maintenance and facility health, we purchased PPE equipment, updated furniture in each library. But the two largest expenses are the HVAC repairs at middle school, which is happening now, and then the HVAC at South, which will begin this summer. So those two together are the bulk of that. So here is the summary of projections for the next two years. So we're planning to spend about $3.6 million this school year, but we have another $4.2 million to spend over the next two years. So there's a list of the budgeted items. Many of the things that we've identified this year, we will continue. The staffing positions, we're going to keep those. We're not going to cut positions. We'll continue to need tutoring support. House Bill 4545 is not going away. In fact, we've been notified last week that they will hold us to the letter of the law this next year. They've given us some grace this year for those 30 hours for kids. I do want to point out, though, sorry, you can't see that. We do have some unallocated funds just to offset any other local expenses as a contingency for something else. So that is what I have for your ESAR report. I'll be glad to answer any questions you have. And Dr. Gilstrap, if there's anything you want to add. The finance committee heard this report in a little more detail. If you guys have something you want to add as well.
What's the stipend for the reading academy completion?
It's $750. We provided that last year out of our early education allotment. But that's only for kindergarten through third grade. And we have some fourth and fifth grade teachers doing it, so.
Is the majority of the money, I'm guessing it's for salaries versus like material items?
Actually, the majority is those two HVAC.
Well, aside from the HVAC?
Yeah. Aside from, let me go back over here. The teacher supports is primarily some, a little bit of professional development and then stipends. So I don't know if you want to call that salaries, but it is a stipend that was given. The academic support is...
What is the student academic support?
So that's some after-school tutoring, and that's materials that we're purchasing for them to have tutoring.
And that's paying for staffing for the tutoring?
If they're outside the school day. That's why I'm saying we've been creative with master schedules. So teachers are, for the most part, doing that during the school day. So we're not paying those teachers any extra or taking a portion of their salary. That $140,000 or $150,000 for T-Class, that's primarily for our FAV Tutor and Book Nook.
How are they accommodating during the class day and making sure the students are still getting their required contact hours?
Great question. So we have small group insertion time at the elementaries. And so what we are doing is called acceleration. So they've identified the kids who are behind on a certain standard, and they're teaching them in advance what the lesson is going to be so they can move a little bit faster within their small group. And then they rotate that group with those who need intervention. So they have small group time, they're just rotating and getting them in that way. Middle school and high school created a special class period. When, what is it called in yours?
No, it's called Flexi-Sketch.
Flexi-Sketch. And then the middle school is in power, is their power period. So they put it into the master schedule.
So it's really been, they've really thought outside the box to try to meet those needs during the school day, because obviously, getting kids here before and after school, you have other outside concerns and not all of them can do it. The other thing about the unallocated, obviously, we allocated funds to do all those things. And then we've been creative in some things that we're scheduling during the day. And the state has come out with multiple things. The T-Class money, we weren't anticipating that. Okay, now we can funnel some of those things out of T-Class. That freed up some things in ESAR. The other things about the VOGA grant, well, now we've been approved for that. Okay, so that could come out as well. We do have some personnel that we have hired out of this. And obviously, those people understand and know that this is temporary. Once that grant is gone, this disposition will have to be evaluated for the funding piece. And that was something we really had to talk about, because how do we want to make sure we can sustain that service or that position? So we are getting creative in how we're doing it during the day, and we are utilizing to form some new positions as well, which all of them are meant and geared towards supporting students ultimately, but also supporting our teachers and administrators so they can in turn support those. can in turn support those students.
So some of that 885,000 that's unallocated, we lose that via the grant, or we just-
We got to spend it.
We have to.
We have to spend it, but we don't spend it this year. We allocated it for this year, but the ultimate deadline is 2024.
2024.
So we could still utilize that, because we may identify, once we get this year over with and we get our assessments back, we may identify, oh, here's a gap we didn't see him. Now we've got those funds.
Utilize it later time.
Dr. Wade, I have a question. You've had a loss to me on one part, something the state, or we lost like about four or five slides back.
They cut in half the purchase-
Oh, the TMA. So the technology instructional material allotment is what we get every two years to buy instructional materials for adoption. And I'll speculate, this is speculation, that they cut it because they say we've got SR monies, right? So use your SR monies. The K eight, kindergarten through eighth grade math and science adoption is up at the end of this year. So if we have online subscriptions, when we purchased it, we purchased it for eight years. This is the end of the eighth year. So instead of the state putting money in this technology instructional material allotment, they cut that by almost two-thirds, and so I need something to replace those subscriptions for our kids, anticipating it's about $176,000.
They dropped the subscription, basically is what it is.
So they didn't all over the state? They dropped- The whole state, everybody's was cut. Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
It used to be the old textbook lot.
Right.
Bought textbook, shifted to technology.
It was always zero with technology, they take the subscription away, so that's one of those logical things.
But that's the fund we're having to juggle where we're spending.
That's the moving target.
But that is an eight-year expense, so when, I've been talking with the committee, we're going to purchase something. It's only a two-year gap for science and a four-year gap for math, so that 176,000 only covers us for two years or four years. We might get another allotment from technology instructional material in another year, but I don't know. I don't know.
The legislature goes into session in January to figure out what they want to do next. And then, and they do different content areas every year, so next year will be, I'm not sure what it is.
It's science. It's not science, but for another grade.
So they have them on a rotation, and so they adopt those new materials on a rotation. So you don't have to do all of them at one time.
Sure.
So next month, I will be bringing to you the adoption for health and P D.
I look forward to that.
Which we will fund out of the technology instructional material allotment fund.
Thank you. I thought I was the only one that just looked for slides. You too. Yeah.
Any other questions?
Next item on the agenda is item number five, action items. The first action item is the consent agenda. Do, does anyone have any questions or discussions on the items of the consent agenda?
For members, I will point out one thing that is included in this one is our renewal of our membership retainer with Walsh-Gaiagos, who's our attorney. Her policy, BDD local, we are required to have a retainer, that is $1,000 a year. Obviously, we get our money's worth with that. It allows us to make free phone calls to them, and we have legal questions, so it is required by policy, so that's in our consent.
All right, any questions or discussion?
Mr. President, I move to accept consent agenda.
Okay.
I second.
Motion to accept it, and all three seconds. All right, any other discussion? All right, all those in favor, raise your hand. All those not in favor, raise your hand. Okay, motion carries seven to zero. Next action item is to consider approval of the purchase of buses. Mr. Schröder, would you come?
Good evening, Board President, Board of Trustees, superintendents of schools. The transportation department has a total of 51 buses in our existing fleet, with models ranging from 2006 to 2018. We do our best to replace older buses that are becoming costly, mainly due to frequent repairs and/or the need for replacement parts or when they have accrued an excessive number of miles traveling our daily routes. We were fortunate in 2020, when we received an EPA rebate grant that afforded us the opportunity to scrap seven of our oldest buses and replace them or exchange for newer, more efficient buses. The district would like to upgrade our fleet with the purchase of two 2023 international buses through Longhorn Bus Sales. The buses will be able to transport 77 passengers that will come equipped with air conditioning, cameras, communication radios, and will be equipped with seatbelts. We received three quotes using the Tasby Buy Board Purchasing Cooperative. If this order is placed this week, the estimated time of arrival is 160 to 180 days out. I attached the quotes through the Tasby Buy Board Purchasing Cooperative for you to view. The cost of this purchase would be $233,408 and $1,600 for the buy board fee, for a total of $235,800. The money for the purchase of the two buses was allocated in this year's line item budget. Order, are there any questions that could possibly be-
Mr. Schröder, when was the last time we bought buses? Was that-
The last time that we actually bought buses, in 2015, we had an accident, and the insurance got us a new bus. But the last time we actually, we scrapped seven of our oldest buses, and that was in 2020, I believe, Mary, right? We got newer buses, I think they were 2017 to 2018 buses. They were just newer, more efficient.
They were, yeah, they were almost new, but they were still used.
Correct.
And that was a couple of years ago, you said?
That was in 2020, yes, sir. And I think, don't hold me to the amount, we had to pay the fee for that, but it was a good deal. Yes, ma'am.
Might be, no, repeat, you have 75 kids can ride?
Seventy-seven passengers.
Seventy passengers, okay. And there's air, seatbelts, cameras, and what else?
Radios that are aligned with our current radio system.
Are these regular buses for like after-school transportation?
Yes, ma'am. We can use them for daily field trips to bus kids to and from UIL school events such as athletics, academics. They're not the special need buses.
They're yellow buses. They're regular, they're regular yellow buses.
Yes, these buses will align with the fleet we have right now. They're diesel, come with a Cummins engine, Allison transmission, and so forth.
So do our existing buses have air conditioning, or would these be an upgrade to some of the ones we have?
Mary, how many, most, the majority of them have air conditioning, but not every single one.
We purged quite a few of our buses that didn't have AC a few years ago.
And the seatbelts are going to be a new requirement, right?
Not necessarily, at a certain age, they are required, yes, sir. But we are thinking that kind of a session planning, when we have money, we will start replacing older buses or purchasing new buses with seatbelts.
I know that we discussed retrofitting some of the buses.
Yes, ma'am.
Have, has, did we do that, or are we-
We have not due to the amount pricing on that, but that is something we are looking into, and we have looked into a little bit.
The estimated cost of the receipt to retrofit our buses and seatbelts was 300 and some thousand dollars to do them all. And obviously with the new law, anything purchased after a certain date has to have a seatbelt. We can't continue to buy buses pre that date, because they're just getting older, they're getting more miles on them. We were fortunate to get those that we bought a couple of years ago, but we just can't continue to sustain our fleet in that way.
The special need buses, are they a separate entity?
Yes. Yes. I think we have eleven, nine or eleven of those buses.
And they have seatbelts, right?
Yes, all of those do have seatbelts with a lid, yes, ma'am.
So how are these priced as compared to, this is Longhorn, you said, getting the new-
There's that, I don't know if you have it in front of you on your, there's three quotes we got there. Longhorn actually was the cheapest of the three quotes, but again, that is our fleet international, and we've been pretty satisfied with them. It's very commonplace in school districts throughout the, especially throughout Texas, but other states too.
Right in line. So that sounds like something we're going to have to start doing and looking into every few years though, too, because, you know, you said 51 buses out there, so.
Our intention, just like this year, was to put the purchase of two new buses into the line item, and we intend to do that again next year, too. Because once you start to cut that, you're behind, right behind on your fleet, and next thing you know, you're going to have to try to get seven. And 180 days to deliver. You're like, order it now.
Parts are still in China, right?
You're doing a great job keeping those buses going up, seeing them up and down the road, won't be spoken, and then next thing you know, we're good again.
Don't get too close to them with a red light.
Any further questions, Board?
No, sir.
All right, you've heard the consideration, discussion, any other discussion? All right, you've heard the consideration of approval of purchase of buses, the motion?
I'll make the motion.
I second.
Ms. Perlinga?
Thank you.
All right, any further discussions? All right, on the paper, leaving it by raising your hand. Anyone opposed? Motion carries seven here. Ms. Engel, considering approval of resolution committing fund balance.
Good evening, Board. Dr. Odom, Dr. Gilstrap. As Mr. Schröder just discussed with you, the purchase of two new buses, he did mention that that purchase, we did have $220,000 set aside in this budget, budgeted for those buses. He also said it's going to take 160, 180 days to get those buses, so that pushes it into next fiscal year. What we can do is since we have that amount set aside this year for buses, we go ahead and we put, we commit that in fund balance, we commit that $220,000 to buying those buses. So what happens in next year, when we come time to pay for those buses, we get those buses in, we do a budget amendment, and we put that money back into next year's budget. So if you'll look at your, if you look at the cover sheet that we have there, where you fund balance can go into one of five categories, non-spendable, which we currently do not have anything in that category, restricted, which at the end of last fiscal year, such as June 30th, 2021, we had $117,722 in that category. That's the Forestville Academic Scholarship Fund, that goes into our fund balance, but that is strictly restricted just for scholarships. Committed, we had zero, assigned, we had zero, and then our unassigned fund balances, you can see right there, just shy of $10 million. So what the attached resolution does for us is that we go ahead and commit that fund balance, that $220,000 to fund balance for buses, so that next year, whenever we come back again to pay for those buses, November, whenever we get them, we go ahead and do a budget amendment and pay for them, using the funds from this year. So that's kind of confusing. But that is, but that is how we go about that, just because of, again, this next year, we're going to put those buses in there, we're going to buy them early, so we don't have to do this again. And then again, coming, and then coming back next year, that's when we do the budget amendment, we uncommit that fund balance. If there are any questions? If there are not, the administration recommends the Board approve the resolution committing fund balance as approved.
Make a motion.
I'll second it. Ms. Martinez makes the motion. I second it. Further discussion? On the paper, leaving it by raising your hand.
Thank you.
We have now concluded our agenda for this meeting. The 33rd point of business. Hearing none, the meeting is adjourned at 7:53. Thank you so much.